Hi, those opposed nay, motion carries. Item number five is called to the public. Anybody that called to the public this evening? Good evening. If you could please state your name for us.
Pete Gruder. Need the address or anything, or nothing? That's it?
Yes.
9353 Blueberry Hill. First of all, I need to apologize. I haven't been here in probably two years. And usually, I only show up when it's something that affects me. But so anyway, one of these days, I'm going to come here when it's, I don't care what's on the agenda. So what I'm here to listen to today is Mr. West's presentation on the trash consolidation feasibility study. I've emailed, he's emailed me a couple of times about this, and that's how I found out this was even on the agenda. But our, I'm the, oh, let me back up to, I'm the president of the Rolling Hills-Hartland Association, and our board is wholeheartedly in support of township-wide trash collection. And at our last annual meeting of all the homeowners, it was pretty much unanimous. I think there was maybe one person that was not in favor of it, and they're not in favor of the township doing anything, pretty much. But so I just want to let you know, I don't know what's going on with it. I haven't really talked to Mr. West that much about it, but, and I don't know where it stands, but we're in support of it, and hopefully, you can do something because we're tired of having, you know, 15 different trucks coming through there all week long. So that's it, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else that called to the public tonight? Being none, we'll move to item number six, which is approval of our consent agenda.
I'll approve the consent agenda.
Support.
Motion by trustee Petrucci, second by trustee Kalani. Any discussion? Being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay, motion carries. Move to item number seven, which is a presentation this evening of our fiscal year 2015-16 and our audit presentation. Good evening.
Good evening. Well, first of all, I'd like to start out saying thank you to the board for having us. Our firm is your independent auditors. It's a real privilege, you know, for us. I would like to also, at that, at this point, to thank the staff of Hartland Township. It's very important, we come in to do our audit, to be able to do it timely, within our budget, and also be able to submit it to the state of Michigan on time. We appreciate all the help that James, the manager, gives us answering the questions that we're trying to get, different things figured out regarding the minutes or things that occur during the year, so it's very helpful. And also to the accountant, Susan, who, again, it's very important for us as the independent auditors that the board is getting good information during the year, so there's very few adjusting our proposed adjustments. So again, when you're looking at your budget actually, and you're trying to make important decisions, it's, you know, from our standpoint, when we come in, if we just, if there's just a few changes and are minimal, that's very important. So I just want to let you know that that was, that occurred also during the year. With that, I'd also, I'd like to say that, you know, we're very pleased to report that we're issuing an unqualified opinion, which is the highest level of opinion that the independent auditor can issue. Again, we're saying that your financial statement presented fairly. And again, just to clarify that your financial statements, we're just issuing an opinion on it as your independent auditors. This is very important to the township goal for bonding. It would help with the rates that you're going to pay. It would also help with state share revenues, that there'll be ever, never any issues as far as the payment of those to the township. With that, one other item too I wanted to mention that helps us, that's helped us tremendously with Hartland, and actually, I've used it with, with other units, is that the township has done a great job doing a mapping. And what that means is in every department, you flowcharted, you know, when any activity occurs, how it occurs, who handles it. And what this tells us is a lot about your internal controls. So when we're looking at that department, we can evaluate what kind of testing we should do, and where there's strengths and weaknesses in a department. And again, you know, it's very important from our standpoint. It helps not only get the audit done timelier, do a better job, and also keep our fees down because we can, you know, better see what's going on in township. So we do appreciate, you know, all the work that's been done in that area. Also, from the, from the board's standpoint, you did a good job budgeting. You were able to stay within budget and actually add a small amount to fund balance while you're also making a transfer to the capital improvement fund for the township. So that's always good to see. Currently, your fund balance is about one times of revenues. And again, there's going to be all kinds of different opinions of what's a good fund balance. The thing I'd like to, you know, make sure, you know, to clarify, and you'll see it in the graph, the total revenues of the township are a little over $2 million, very similar to your fund balance, but half of that is state share revenues. So there's always talk, you know, different ideas that they're going to cut back on state share revenues. More recently, they were talking about shifting some of those revenues to cities that weren't, they felt, you know, that needed more financial help away from other units that, you know, they felt didn't need as much help. But again, should anything change there that would dramatically affect, you know, the township? So just always be aware of that possibility, since it's half of your revenues. Actually, the taxes that are collected from the residents is a small portion of it for the township. A large portion, as everybody knows, goes to the schools.
Yeah, but a lot of that is constitutional, though.
Yes.
All of that's constitutional.
All but about $35,000.
So I think it's important that we distinguish that from what is discretion, you know, what legislature can change.
Yep.
So you're right, it could change, but it would take a constitutional amendment.
Yep.
Except what they've been, not to go on a rabbit trail, some of the rhetoric last year in Lansing was changing the definitions of some of the things that go into that, that formula. If they change certain revenue streams that go into that big pot that we get a portion of, that could have an effect here.
Okay.
Yeah, without a constitutional amendment, unfortunately.
Well, I think that would end up being a lawsuit.
I would bet.
Yeah, definitely. And one other area too I wanted to mention is, you know, has to do with the investments of the township, and Treasure's done a great job with it. There's been a change in the market where larger banks or institutions don't want to collateralize or insure as much of the funds. But these institutions are very strong, like some of the units in particular will have one institution that they have other funds in, which I wouldn't recommend. Hartland Township does not do that. Again, for, for safety's sake, you've always been on the, on the side of less of a return for more security, which is good, because as we know, the market can fluctuate tremendously. So, you know, again, it's, it's part of the audit process when we're looking at because it's important for the board to know, you know, what's going on in there because it's your largest asset for the township. And with that, I'll just open up for any questions that the board may have.
Matt, do you have any questions?
Not this time.
For those that are at home, we did have a work session prior to this meeting, actually a special board meeting, when we've already reviewed this this evening, one time. There were one question that keeps coming back, though, I mean, we can just, for those that are at home, just discuss briefly the, where the sewage is and the bonds and that type of thing, kind of where we are today and what it looks like in the future.
Well, actually, the township has made great strides in that area because, again, when the sewers first came about, it was like in most units, it was the hope and prayer that there would be the growth, and everyone expected that we had a downturn in the economy. But actually, during this period of time, when things have turned around, the township's done a good job encouraging good growth to help reduce that, that difference between what the total bonds are and what the assets are to pay the bonds back. And again, you know, we would, again, encourage to be able to meet those future obligations, and you continue in the same direction you are, but again, you've made great strides in that, reducing that debt.
Okay.
Yep.
I'll move to accept the 2015-16 audit.
Support. Motion by treasure hornin', second by trustee Harper. Is there any other discussion or comments? Being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number eight, Settlers Park Residential Monitoring Plan. Mr. West, I believe this has your name on it.
Good evening. The plan that you have before you is the former wastewater treatment plant, groundwatering, monitoring plant. This is a result of the last results from the groundwater monitoring plant. Consent judgment for that abandonment calls that if there, if we exceed certain limits of certain chemicals, in this case sodium chloride, we have to, through the consent order, enter into a residential monitoring plan. As you recall, we passed a change order for AMAC to develop the plan, as well as execute it and interpret the results, and also negotiate on our behalf with DEQ. So what you have before you is the actual plan that we're prepared, that has been prepared for DEQ with regards to the residential monitoring wells, looking for the township board blessing before we send it to DEQ.
And it's been reviewed by DEQ before you sent it? Like, did they ever do that?
Yes. Primarily, what, what happened was we requested a meeting with DEQ. As soon as we had the exceedance, said, listen, we know we have to enter into the residential monitoring plan. Here's what we're proposing. Can you provide feedback to us? This, what we had proposed is what we have here. DEQ responded very favorable, said this is exactly what we would be looking for. However, that's just a verbal, we were in a meeting, they said you have to formally submit, and it gets reviewed by multiple levels of the DEQ, but this is exactly what they would anticipate that we submit.
And was there a cost associated with this plan?
The plan, the cost was, I forget, I believe it was $10,000 to develop the plan, to carry it out, to analyze it. And then if you look back at the consent agenda, we had the sampling agreement with Livingston County. They are going to be the third party to actually do the sampling on our behalf. And then we also have lab fees, because they do not cover the lab fees. They'll take the samples and then take them to the lab for us, so.
So for the viewing public, how much will that cost on an annual basis?
Well, we have, and until the plan is actually approved, and what parameters they make us and the frequency has yet to be determined, based on what we're proposing, we believe it's a number not to exceed $6,000 a year. And that's an extreme lab fee, depending on what they're going to make us test for. So we're kind of hoping for the best planning for the worst sort of situation here. They may make us test these homes quarterly. We're hoping that they do it annually, but until we actually submit the plan and get their feedback and their approval, we won't know for sure.
There's even a best-case scenario where they look and see that it was a one-year exceedance and say, let's wait another year.
And that, that could very well-
I'm not guaranteeing that, but that's a possibility, too.
And I think it's, just for those who may be at home watching this, maybe go back just a few years to where this site is, and just so people can, at home, make, going, where are we, and-
Absolutely.
And the sodium chloride, and kind of just a little bit of a history, not, we could spend hours.
Yes, yes, absolutely, as briefly as I can. When the Hartland Township, the former wastewater treatment plant was abandoned, there were issues with exceedance of potassium and sodium chloride. And basically, the state had required us to monitor the site, and we started off with nearly 30 monitoring wells. And over the years, it has been reduced down to eight wells. We are currently at eight. We had our largest reduction last year as a result of a lot of the levels showing quite a bit of dissipation. Unfortunately, we had one, the MW28S, which is the northwest well there, had a slight exceedance. And as I, if memory serves me correct, if this was 1991, it would not have been an exceedance. So it's, it's a result of more stricter guidelines that the MDQ has, has placed on these sort of monitoring plans. It exceeded by, I believe, 30 parts per million, which is not a large concern by any means. This is purely aesthetics. This is not a health issue at 30 parts per million. Just in, so the consent agreement says that we must submit a residential monitoring plan. Now, what they do with it, as James had said, there is the possibility they may say, this was such a low amount, please just re-sample again next year. There's a possibility they may say these houses that you have identified, you know, pull samples from them, if they come back clean, you're out of the residential monitoring plan. There's many different solutions here, until, I would think that they're most likely going to make us do at least one sample, and then if they all come back clean, we'll, we'll be in good shape. So until we actually submit the plan, we won't know what their requirements are going to be. So this is our, our best proposal, based on in-person meetings with the EQ representatives.
And James, if you could maybe just show on your map here where those homes are located, and how many, there's 12, correct?
There's 14.
14.
This is the well, where that well was at. This diagram shows a little bit better where those 14 homes are at.
Okay.
And that well is somewhere in this area. Wood Cliff is on, is on the water system, so they don't have wells, so it's just these homes around here that would have the wells. And on that previous diagram, the old sewage treatment plant was where Meyer is now.
Many moving parts to this. The plan is both the groundwater monitoring, as well as the residential monitoring. But I'll be more than happy to answer any other questions that you may have.
Was the well that came back above the criteria sampled twice already?
Yes. Immediately upon getting the, the level that was exceeded, we authorized a secondary sample and to make sure that there wasn't an error or something of that, and it repeated, the results were repeated. So kind of confirmed that there was an actual exceedance. We did get the EQ's blessing to conduct a re-sample as well. So we have kept them in tune as to our proactive efforts in trying to resolve this issue as soon as we can.
And the second question is the map that we're looking at now. What are the areas highlighted in blue?
They were the surface water wells. If you look, there's SW, and then there's the MWs, and it depicts what surface water area it's pulling from.
We were monitoring those to try to see if there was existing runoff water that was adding to the sodium chloride on the site, whether it be from salt from the roads or-
And the surface water samples actually have historically aided the township in reducing the number of wells because they showed seasonal increases from the road salt, because that's primarily where it all ends up after, after the thaw. And you would see it spike and then quickly dissipate in a matter of three months. DEQ has recognized that there is a direct connection to the road salt.
Bob, are those homes that we're going to be testing, or you proposed to test, are they on the township sewer system, or are they on septic?
About half and half. The sewer system runs up Hartland Road, it does not go down Dunham Road.
Okay.
So it is parallel with Hartland, in fact, right in the right-of-way of Hartland Road.
And then the well that tested the highest was actually closest to those homes, correct?
Yes, right, right in that area where the cursor is.
Is there any chance, is there an impact from, you know, the water softening being put into a septic system, of having some type of impact on that?
And that was our question for DEQ. We've also had concerns about, there's a couple pools that have been emptied in that area. And DEQ said, their response was basically the, the level of detection to, to reach that level of exceedance, it's really a drop in a rainstorm in the grand scheme of things, which I, we tried to negotiate, and AMAC was there as well, trying to indicate, we use potassium as a tracer, and usually the potassium indicates that it's actually from the wastewater plant and not, road salt won't have that necessarily in it. And they're not convinced that that's a solid argument. And basically, they kind of stick to the rules of regardless of where it's coming from, you know, that if you exceed, you have to enter into the residential monitoring plan. But to answer your question, they believe that the impact from a sump pump or a water softener, anything of that nature, would be so minimal that it would never trigger where these samples are being taken. Because these aren't surface water, this is down in the aquifer where this was an exceedance.
And this is, as I think we mentioned last time, DEQ is going to look at. When the plant was in operation, for as many years as it was in operation, an exceedance of the standard then, and every day was measured in millions of gallons of how, that they look at that, that drop in the bucket perspective.
Yes.
Right or wrong, but that's how they're looking at it as a contribution.
Now, not necessarily that I agree with that, that thought process, but yes, that is very true, thank you for that. That's how they correlated, is you're talking about millions of gallons of discharge that was exceeding the limit when the plant was in place, day after day after day for years, to a sump pump discharge. So, and again, because it's not surface water, we're talking down in the aquifer, that it's more of a concern.
But in defense of trustee Harper, it should be also noted that the reason Hartland Township has a sodium and a chloride issue from the former wastewater treatment plant was because of all the water softener discharges that were going into the sewer system. That's the reason why we have this problem in the first place.
Anything else this evening? If there isn't, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the residential monitoring plan as presented and authorize the Public Works Department to submit to DEQ on behalf of the township.
Support. Motion by treasure hornin', second by trustee Kalani. Is there any other discussion?
I just have one quick question. Historically, have we seen the concentrations in this well that all of a sudden had a hit rising steadily?
Unfortunately, this one has slowly been creeping up. It had a few dips a couple of years ago, but no, this, this has been a trend, it is not a anomaly.
And it should be noted that it's going in the direction toward Porter Creek. So that's kind of where you would expect the, we're never in discharge basins that far north.
Correct.
But that's where the waters might-
Okay, thank you. If there's another discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay, motion carries. Thank you. Item number eight B is the trash consolidation feasibility study. And as we get ready for that, I'm passing out a handout that's in your packet. On the back of that is a survey that we'd like to get your feedback on from tonight's discussion, because there's some important policy decisions that will need to be made, and your, your input is important to that. With that, James, can you, can you just briefly explain kind of what the process is tonight, and kind of what your expectations are when we have our discussion finished?
Yeah, so a very short recap, and I don't want to steal any of Bob's thunder, he has a PowerPoint to go through, but this issue did come to a head a little bit with our Safer Roads Task Force. It is recognized that the number of waste haulers on the roads is a contributing factor to their wear and tear, and that one obvious solution that many communities have embraced is to consolidate trash collection throughout the community, and to decrease the number of, of heavy trucks going down, especially those neighborhood roads. So the, the task force had recommended that the board take a strong look at this. It was not, not necessarily a part of the, obviously, the millage proposal or the, the plan in the end, but through a strategic planning process, the board said in 2016, we'd take a look at it. We had, we took a look at doing this on a neighborhood basis in last year, and for, chose to forego that until this year, and there's a couple of important questions we want to talk through. With that, I'm happy to turn it over to Bob.
Thank you. So this is the, as part of the strategic plan, we were to look at the feasibility study for consolidated trash collection in Hartland Township. So obviously, the background, as James stated, stems from the Safer Roads Millage. Currently, the township has six contractors operating in the township, though that tends to change depending on who's buying out who, or mergers or anything of that nature. We've had multiple requests from residents and homeowners associations for single contractors, and we're projected to have approximately 5,000 single-family accounts in 2017. One of the issues we currently have in the township is there is a large delta of services offered between recycling and frequency, and how recycling is done to yard waste, if it's done weekly, bi-weekly, or seasonally. Large item pickup, some companies do it, some don't, some charge an additional fee, as well as the fee structure for all these services. Obviously, the, the schedule is one of the biggest issues, is it seems that each one of those contractors tends to work on a different day in Hartland Township, ending up with multiple trucks on our public roads, different, different days of the week. So one of the, my goal here was to provide a few recommendations after some research, so one of the questions that'll come up is a single versus multiple contractors. Originally, we had kind of looked at, would it make more sense to break the township into, with, between two contractors resulting in two different districts? Roughly 5,000 weekly accounts can be handled by three trucks over four days by all current contractors operating in the township. What that's saying is this is not a big task. It would, it would complicate things if we were to divide it up between multiple contractors. The equitable cost and the account districts, as development evolves in the township, we would be constantly trying to balance these two accounts. If we put this out to bid and you take the two lowest contractors, now we're going to the second lowest and asking them to match the first lowest. There may be some discrepancies among that, although I think that would be the, the easier hurdle. The second one would be when we divide this up, as development comes up, and we add 300 new homes to one account, do we have the other contractor saying, you know, is the next development going to be mine, or how we're going to constantly be re-dividing this if we're trying to make it equitable? Based on that, I'm recommending a single trash collection contractor if we move forward with this program.
And as a reference point, I mean, a close neighbor that does this is Genoa Township, and obviously larger than us, and they just use one contract for the whole township.
So the recommendations for how to launch this program are basically looking, the township board will have to adopt multiple resolutions, generally takes four to six months, depending on what time of the year we're looking for the program to take effect before we can assess for it. Most residents are currently locked into quarterly contracts, however, I have heard and received concerns regarding residents that are locked into annual contracts. For that reason, I'm recommending that we offer a transition period of one year. During the year, the township notifies, does a public launch, notifies all the residents of the assessment that will begin in one year, and essentially encourages everybody to sign up with the township-selected contractor when their current contract expires. Upon conclusion of the one-year mark, all residents would be assessed for the trash collection through the township. That would give everybody a 12-month window to make amends with their current contract- That would give everybody a 12-month window to make amends with their current contractor and get onboard. The alternative, if we were to move faster, would be a lot of staff time to prorate the people who cannot get out of their contract. Um, and really just trying to eliminate the, the administrative part of that because I, I believe that would be, uh, quite a bit of record keeping for all the different people who cannot get out of their existing contracts in time. So that's my recommendation moving forward would be to let the public know in one year it's going to happen and then at that time convert over.
Bob, on that, just on that point.
Yes.
We've got a quarterly payment that we make and so obviously quarterly contract. No matter how this is implemented, you know, like my quarter might start like a month before this program goes into effect, so I'm tied in for three months. I mean, is there that much leeway with these? I never really asked the, the company like, hey, I'm going to pay by month now.
What would you do is the township would put it out to bid before we even do the announcement. We would select our contractor. So basically the residents would know, once your quarter's up, you could switch over.
So we could switch over earlier?
Correct.
For, okay.
Correct. And what that would also do, a segue into that would, rather than kind of launch 5,000 accounts on any contractor, they would slowly integrate into the township over one year and we could work build our way up to the 5,000 accounts versus having 5,000 new accounts overnight.
Okay, that's, that's a good idea.
Sorry, I should have cleared.
No, that's okay. That's good.
And then this is going to be SAD on their winter tax once a year?
Correct. Correct.
Which is lower, the winter or the summer?
Well, all specials go in winter.
All specials.
So basically the, the proposed plan after, uh, talking with our neighboring communities and others that have done this, talking with the homeowners associations, um, we're looking to provide only the single family homes, not, who receive curbside collection. This would not get into any commercial who have the dumpsters because obviously their rates would change and fluctuate based on what they're getting rid of. Um, the curbside, if a condominium complex or multi-family, uh, unit has curbside service, this would be offered to them as well. Um, if they have a dumpster where they take their trash to the dumpster, they would be excluded from this. Um, that's a recommendation because then we're getting into different fee structures based on the size of the dumpsters and the frequency that they're being dumped. We're trying to minimize the, the impact on the residents as well as streamline the program launch. So we're recommending only single family homes, uh, to have all-inclusive services at the best value possible. Now, what that means is any of the services that you're currently receiving, you may receive more services, but none of your existing services will be taken away. That has been the, the one over, over abundant concern from any of the homeowners associations I attend is what are we going to lose? The goal is not to lose anything. They may get more than they've ever used and may say, I don't need yard waste. Well, it's going to be included with everybody. That's just the way it works, but we, nobody will lose any services. They will actually gain services in certain scenarios, um, but weekly trash collection, weekly recycling pickup, uh, yard waste collection year round and large item pickup services available as well.
Is there a breakdown? Have you looked at that comment as far as how that breaks down into services? I mean, we live out in the country.
Mm-hmm.
A lot of people don't need yard waste pickup.
Correct.
The only ones that really need it are the subdivisions. And I live in the woods.
And, and my answer would be you're probably subsidizing the recycling aspect. There's not a whole lot of money in driving three miles to pick up one recycle bin, you know, where, that, that's why some contractors have elected to not even go out to these, these rural areas because there's just, it's not cost effective. If they don't have enough accounts to, to regulate that, whether it's right or wrong, it, you know, yes, there are going to be people who, who say, I don't recycle, but it's going to be included, you are going to pay for it. Um, if you don't use the yard waste pickup, um, you know, certainly there, it would be part of the assessment, but, um, we can certainly dive into it and get a breakdown if that, if that helps the, the argument. It gets, what we're trying to eliminate is where public works and finance is going, these accounts don't get yard waste and these accounts don't.
I understand that part, but I, I get that. I'm just saying that I think people want low cost.
Mm-hmm.
Average removal for the majority of their domestic waste.
Correct.
You keep saying, well, we're not going to lose any, well, I, I, maybe we need to streamline this and look at domestic waste and recycles, recyclables and all these other things are something that might be an add-on that, that homeowner can ask for and get built separately by the policy.
Fair enough. That's certainly another way to look at it.
It, it, it seems to me that that might address some of the folks who are snowbirds too, you know, cause you're keeping that cost lower for that domestic waste that you can't otherwise burn or whatever.
Certainly.
If you look at a farm, I suppose you can get rid of all that.
Well, this is certainly, uh, I mean, another aspect of this is we're also picking up and learning lessons from others who've gone before us. We're not, we're not the first adventure on this, on this track. And that was pretty over resounding theme from them as well. Uh, don't, don't put yourself in a position where you're offering a lesser service. What's being proposed on the table here is you'll be able to get the same, if you're only a trash and recycling customer, this rate is, um, pretty confident, still less than what you are paying now, plus you're going to get yard waste with that. Yes, there's some, um, subsidy, if you will, back and forth for if the subdivisions are using more yard waste, but it's taking more gas to drive out to the larger rural lots, it may be trade-off. If we want to get, dive into à la carte services, that complicates it and it's something we could look into.
I know this is anecdotal, but just looking at this, I, I assume this is just a estimate.
Correct. Yeah. All these numbers are just.
This is about $25 less per quarter for me and I only use the trash aspect. Okay, so obviously I would be in favor of something like this. You know, I don't need any of those other services, but this is a safe, going to save me money.
Well, this is like $6 more a quarter for us, but we don't have yard waste or large item.
Well, I think they do large item, we call them.
And I'm sure there's, you know, it will be very tough to design a program that's everybody's going to, uh, you know, support. I, I do believe that there's, you know, when we're trying to meet everybody's demands, there's always going to be, uh, something that, that somebody's just not drilled about. But, uh, the goal would be to, uh, find the best solution that, you know, does not take anybody's services away at this time. But certainly we can look into it. Um, we can look into just the core services as well. Um, but I am recommending a single trash collection contractor, uh, recommending the one-year window before the assessment starts. But before the public launch, we let the public know who that contractor is so they can get onboard when their current contract expires. They may be on it early, it's just after the one-year mark, then it'll be assessed. Um, and then we, public works and the township in general would launch public outreach efforts during that one-year window to, uh, kind of hold information meetings with HOAs and, and any of the residents who are, have questions regarding this. Uh, one of the caveats with this particular plan, um, I'm recommending that the township trash cart is included in the assessment and that the township pays for the trash cart. Um, we've had a few neighbors that, uh, did not have that particular aspect in their program and switched vendors and it, it has not gone over smooth. I'll just, I'll say it that way. Um, when you have the contractor supply the cans and it's time to switch contractors, you're, you're kind of at the mercy of the old contractor to pick up their cans, which in one particular case took six weeks where cans were left out. So, um.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Absolutely. Are all the cans compatible with the equipment? You know, like the, you know, like mine's got that little metal bar that they hook on.
Yes.
And dump. So all the cans are pretty much universal and they're structured, they're all designed the same.
Yes. And we could. So what are we going to do with those 5,000 cans? As far as delivering them? I mean, that's my, I need your reaction. Oh, storing them? Is that the question? No, if everybody gets a can. Right. There's 5,000 cans.
The contractor, right? Takes them back.
Right.
Most of them belong to contractor. Some people own their own is what you're.
I don't know what, I think pay them home for your own ours. I mean, we still have some old ones from HMS, so I don't know how that whole thing works.
Some people buy their own. Most people rent them from the contractor.
But if you can't for, uh, recycling? Yes, we're working on the size of that. Um, there's a few anomalies associated with recycling and, um, as to, um, what is actually being recycled? I'll phrase it that way. It's a whole nother topic, but, uh, to ensure that the recycling is, is done properly, we're recommending the smaller bins so we can see if there's any contaminated material before it goes into the truck. Right now with the, the 96 gallon carts, that's not feasible.
And the recycling centers.
Everybody have the same one? Yes. But that, that's not part of this? That is part of this.
So do other townships, um, include all their residential or do they, um, break out condominiums, apartments and so forth?
Everybody that we've spoken with has broken them out. Um, there's a little variation as far as, um, multi-family units. They'll leave it up to the, to the, the association or whether they want to join or if they want to remain on their own.
Then, then you still have, you know, a half a dozen different companies coming through the township.
I agree. That's how other communities choose to do it. I'm not recommending that. I'm recommending if you have curbside pickup, that you, you are going to participate.
So that basically just leaves the apartment complex at which, um, in this case, um, they're on M-59, that's a road built for, uh, that heavier traffic and then it's their own internal roads that maybe are, um.
Does the manufacturing development on 59, do they have curbside pickup?
The manufacturing, I'm sorry.
Heartland Metals?
Uh, I'm not, not sure over there. I believe they, I'm not sure.
They do.
They do.
They do.
Okay, they do.
Okay. Another question I have is that when you're, when you're pricing these things out.
Mm-hmm.
Obviously the, the quantity is going to drive the price.
Generally speaking, yes.
So are we talking about all of Heartland Township or are we talking about south of Clyde Road? Or how, what are we talking about? Because it seems to me that if we're talking to all of Heartland Township, the people who live in the subdivisions over here are going to be subsidizing the people who live way out in the farmland because it costs a lot more to pick up the garbage out there. And I'm not so sure that's a fair way of doing it.
We can certainly break it out however the board desires.
We are talking about all of Heartland Township, um, and that probably is the case as was mentioned earlier. In the end, again, those people may not use the yard waste. In the end, it's still a savings for most everybody involved or they're getting more service if it costs more. Um, I'm not aware of communities that differentiate between a so-called rural customer versus a suburban customer. Um, and it probably, I can imagine would be difficult on the contractors to ask them to differentiate that price.
I understand what you're saying. And if the price comes in where it's a little bit less, even if it's $5 less a quarter for most of the subdivision around here, I don't think there'd be a problem. But if it comes in $5 more, there's going to be a problem.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, so, you know, we don't know what that number is, but I don't think the people that are living in the suburbs are going to want to subsidize the people way out in the country.
Certainly understandable. And what I'm trying to do is just say, here's a feasible plan if we want to move forward. With the board's blessing, if, if this is a acceptable plan, I will move forward and dive in to try and get some more tighter numbers because obviously that's, that's going to be the, the point that you guys need to know next.
And you'll, and this being feasibility, you can say continue to move forward and you can get those bids and we can decide whether that, that problem exists, whether it does result in an increase that might make us want to dive into possible à la carte options, uh, or to cancel the program altogether.
But I just want to go back and reiterate, I think what James said about the, you know, the subsidizing. I live in one of those rural, it's not that far out, but it's still a rural area. And it, like Joe mentioned, my yard waste is going in my own backyard. Your yard waste is going to be picked up and, you know, there's a fee for that. So, you know, we could say we're subsidizing your yard waste as opposed.
You want my yard waste? You can have it.
I mean, it's just, it's, it's a balance. It really is a balance. I don't know if anybody's really subsidizing anybody here.
Well, through the education, we're all paying a road millage tax where if we can save our roads.
Yes, it helps everybody.
Right.
So you're looking for some direction tonight?
Yeah, so maybe there's some other discussion the board might want to have. You, you kind of get the talking points on the back of that survey. Uh, we talked about phasing it in, uh, over, give a one-year advance notice versus the, uh, the quicker turnaround where people have to deal with their existing contracts. And we'd be interested in your feedback on that. Um, the second, uh, question had to do with how to treat the multi-families. Um, um, our recommendation was to, to leave that out if they're using dumpsters, let them continue using dumpsters. And then, um, the third question there was about the, um, the township buying those carts and owning the carts versus leasing them from the contractors. Uh, we were recommending, the fourth one, we're recommending just going with a senior contractor for the size of, of what's proposed versus dividing the township up, uh, looking for the board feedback on that. And then, uh, one of the things I mentioned before, uh, that we'll want to talk about is because the, one of the, um, impetus of this idea came from safer roads, uh, one could argue that a part of this also includes, uh, making sure that the existing contractor that we get isn't overweight themselves. And that might include something in the contract that, uh, makes them submit to random weigh-ins uh, just to make sure now. That's a, a kind of a creative idea that's out there. Um, I don't know that, that's a common practice I'm aware of. Um, it, I'm just submitting it as if that's one of our goals is to protect the roads from, of overweights. Um, that's something we might want to consider. Suffice to say, if that's in a contract, bids are going to be more. Uh, the, the contractor's got to put more things in place, uh, which arguably they should be doing anyway, uh, to ensure that they're not overweight. Um, and things happen on a wet day, trash weighs more, uh, when it rains. And so contractors, um, to avoid being overweight, either have to have axles that drop or, or empty the truck more often or that kind of a thing, uh, but we could put that in. Now, you could also argue that just the fact of less trucks being on the road, uh, is, is enough of a, of a gain to not have to monkey with that idea either. So we're interested in, in the board's thought on that.
I do have two quick questions. The, the first one is about what you were just saying. The county does have a motor carrier unit, right? Where they weigh the trucks. I mean, there would be nothing wrong with not including that in the contract and just asking them to be a little more aggressive in our area if that, that's possible.
We could, yeah.
And that's just, that all trucks are subjected to that.
With probable cause that they're overweight, this, or, I'm sorry, no, there's a different standard.
Yeah, there's no probable cause involved in weighing the truck. They're, they're a commercial carrier and they're subjected to being weighed at whenever the motor carrier decides to weigh them. Um, and the other question I have is what if you have a residential that uses a dumpster? One of our residents in our subdivision uses an dumpster.
I'm sure there's going to be quite a few anomalies associated with this program. Um, we're trying to still hunt those down. We have, uh, I don't know. The answer is do we want to force that person to use a residential can? And if they need more than one can, the additional cans have to be set up through, through the contractor? Or do we let them, um, you know, get a, get a dumpster from the contractor that we choose and then pay the additional portion out of their own?
There are things that are going to come up, even within a traditional subdivision, you're going to have a demolition project that requires them to have an onsite dumpster for a period and that'll be above and beyond and on their own and it's still going to have a heavy truck and we'll have to figure those out.
We have, there are some customers on the north end of town that, uh, have multiple cans that they pay for. They have four and five cans and, uh, you know, what we're looking at is working with the contractor where anything over the additional first can would just. contractor where anything over the additional first can would just, the homeowner would have to work directly with the contractor for that. Because I think if you're obviously not the norm and there would be a fee determined by the contractor for that. And again, I'm just looking more for feedback. The survey information will help me kind of, we're at the flyover view here and I'm looking to dial it in. Once I get the surveys back, I'll certainly follow up, provide the survey results and also try and fine tune the cost based on the survey results to give more information. Obviously, there's a lot of unknowns. We're trying to find all those anomalies out associated with people with special circumstances, but this is just a feasibility study. Is it feasible? Yes, it is.
How many year contract are you thinking?
What I'd like to do, especially initially, is just a one-year contract, which a lot of the contractors or people I've spoken with seem okay with as long as the township is paying for the cans. The cans are a substantial investment and to recover the cost, I'm not confident that they would be recovered right away. So that's the biggest concern, the cost of entry for any of the contractor is the collection cans and recycle bins. So if the township's funding that, there's not too many that are going to have heartburn over a one-year contract. Obviously, people will want longer contracts, the contractors will want longer contracts. My goal with this particular plan was to have the leverage to switch contractors without impacting the residents. By having our own cans, that does give us the upper hand on that.
So if the contractor doesn't open the, own the cans, the cans are owned by the township?
Correct.
So how the cans get to the people's homes?
Contractor will deliver them.
And they'll take their old can?
Yeah, if they want it.
They want to take the old can. The company you're servicing.
Well, if you rent it, if you own it?
Oh, a replacement?
Well, I'm still, you know, I don't have cannon, do you have just-
I thought you were going to do that.
What's that?
I thought you were going to do that.
That's just a lot of cans, that's a lot of-
Well, no, the majority of them are rented, quite frankly. The majority of people rent cans. It's not that many people that own cans.
I didn't know how many people did.
Can you explain your last question a little bit more on the weight limits on the trucks and so forth?
Basically, I'm looking to-
The thinking was behind that?
I want to know if you're in favor of it or not. There's different viewpoints, as James had pointed out of, yes, we should include this, but I don't want you, what I want you to know is that if you choose to elect to have these weigh limits or random ways, there may be a fee increase associated with that. Now, I don't know, I'm speculating, I just know-
Yeah, it's sort of like if you want a stricter warranty on a road project or something else, you're going to pay for, I mean, the contract's going to build into their bid the risk that they're adopting with that.
How are you going to, police staff?
We just work with the county to randomly have the weigh master come up one day and let's weigh all the trucks or weigh that truck.
So if the county catches them overweight, they get fined, okay?
They do. This could be an elective-
Could the township impose a fine as well?
We could have, we could adopt an ordinance and have our own weigh master and a contract.
If they get fined by the county, couldn't we adopt our own to piggyback that?
No, and they wouldn't, they wouldn't write it under our ordinance anyway. They'd run, write it under the state code.
Trying to figure out a way to recover the cost.
They have our own weights of others.
I don't want to do that.
I could interrupt it at all, but in the state, we've been told over multiple times, we've had fines of $5,000 at all, it was the state. When I asked where the money goes, they told me the local library, so, in township, so that was kind of what he answered. I asked him where all that money was at. They like to do brand, up and down, 50,000.
May I ask you a couple of questions?
Sure.
I appreciate all the work you've done, you and the other staff members, but I believe when we first started talking about this, we were looking to get a pilot program and what it's turned into is a feasibility study on township-wide services.
That is correct.
When did that change occur and why are we abandoning the pilot program?
That change occurred on the township strategic plan for 2016.
And isn't this also the subject matter that was proposed to be postponed until '17? And I was the one that urged us to keep moving forward on it, if I remember correctly? Remember?
Yeah, maybe. You can clarify a couple of things.
Please.
On the last point, yes. We, a couple of meetings ago, we had this on the agenda to say the strategic plan objective is coming due. There's, you could argue maybe delaying this or moving forward with it and I believe you were one board member and the board was in consensus to, let's keep moving on it with staff in-house work on it. And so this is where we've come to. Your original question, originally it was all township-wide. The idea of doing pilot projects in the subdivisions themselves came early in 2015 when we were starting to get more inquiries. But the original discussion was do this township-wide. The idea of doing the pilot, or we didn't necessarily like the word pilot, but doing the smaller neighborhoods came about because of demand and we started to look into that and then there was some instability in the local contractors that caused us to say, now is not the right time to do that. So we could still do smaller sample size of the trash collection. That would not be what we originally set up to do. It was an idea that came up later. We don't necessarily see a reason to do that for us doing 1,000 homes versus 5,000 homes. And I, that's my perspective anyway, Bob may have a different opinion of that, that there isn't that much difference to us. So I don't know if you're advocating for a particular approach, but-
Not necessarily, I was just trying to figure out how we got from point A to point B.
Yeah, there's a B and a C. B was the middle idea of a pilot because there was demand from HOAs as was set out tonight and we thought, well, we could actually do that if that's what we want to do and we decided to not do it until there was more stability in the local market. And now we've gotten to the point where we're ready to actually look at the whole township, so that's where we're at.
How soon can we get sample ordinances to put something like this into effect?
We already have sample ordinances. To do one for us wouldn't take very long. Our attorney probably turn it around within a month, I would expect.
It's been mentioned tonight that the process could take three or four months at a minimum.
Yeah, this is, it'd be by ordinance and there'd be an SAD process, so that itself would take the time. You have to put people on notice, you have to have public hearings, you have to have multiple steps in the SAD process, so that's multiple meetings, so that's the time.
Well, I'm going to maybe speak out of turn here, but it seems to me like, I definitely see the value in something like this, but where it has the most impact right now and the quickest impact would be those closed net communities that are already asking for it. And it seems like this is going to take a longer process to get county-wide adoption, not county-wide, excuse me, township-wide. And so I'm just wondering if, you know, you always learn from your mistakes, maybe it would be smart to put an ordinance in place and we've already got willing customers and I just don't understand if, you know, why there is, what is the downside to progressing at that pace while we work toward a bigger goal?
It's up to this board, what your goal is and what timeline you'd like to reach it. If you'd like for us to do it on SADS voluntarily, those would have a timeline themselves that has to be petitions and can be voluntary SADS. It's a policy question for this board. What's your goal and by when would you like to have something implemented? If the big picture is to have, if you, if the board's already decided in its mind that township-wide trash collection for the protection of all township roads is the goal and to do that sooner and later, that's what this plan really is looking towards. And if the board has a different view of that, that's certainly something we should talk about. So it's a good question.
The other thing I think we should do as part of our due diligence is hold a public hearing and get input from the residents. We may find that there's a certain fraction of majority who's going to say, you know, I really don't see the benefit and we should seek that input in advance rather than after we go to the effort of trying to impose it on everybody.
So you've got two different ideas. One is if you have a willing customer or association that we should pursue going forward with them.
Yeah, why, there should be no reason to delay them while we work through other-
So if we did this concurrently, still have to have a process in place if it's going to end up on a SAD?
Yes, as I think through that scenario, I do have similar concerns, administrative concerns to. If our plan is to be township-wide within a year or two, they might have administrative work to do a couple of SADS in the interim, I could see myself getting beat up in meetings over that. That could be a concern that if it's, if we're just talking the difference of wait another year, I might advocate for, if the end game is the whole township within a year or two, let's focus on that. That's my knee-jerk reaction to it. If it's the board's desire to do that, of course, we can do it. There is a lot of work involved in SADS, particularly individual SADS and I know because we already do a lot of them, so it wouldn't, it's not unlike us to do that. It's just that if we have a bigger goal that we're going to pursue within a year or two, and maybe that's the best question to start with around the table, is, is the board believe that we're pursuing township-wide trash collection within X number of years? I'd be interested to know that because that would drive what the interim steps are really, I think.
And that's why I think we need to have a public meeting, get input from the residents.
Good. Well, I think you heard that tonight, you've got people living in a rural area and you've got people living, you know, tighter quarters and there's a difference of opinion even on our board as to-
Well, I don't think, is there anybody who says no township-wide? I don't think any of us say that, is there?
And I really think it really boils down to like for the individual people, it's like dollars in their pocket. I mean, if it's equal to or less than what they're paying right now, these other different issues that we have are, you know, inconsequential. So I lean with what's been proposed, to do it within a year. We're going to know, one of the first things I would assume is we're going to put it out to bid or at least get some feedback from-
Absolutely.
So we're going to know, I mean, if we're going to know that early in the process, so if it's outrageously expensive, you know, at that point, we could, you know, change our minds, but if it's reasonable and it appears like most of the people in the township are going to get some type of reduction or equal, equal amount of money paid out in higher services, like you say, like the recycles or the yard waste, I think we should move forward as proposed. Well, I do agree with Matt. I mean, again, we're, sometimes I think we have to be careful that we just don't make a decision on behalf of the whole township without having the appropriate notification and opportunity for input. And I don't know if that is a public hearing or if it's a survey or what that looks like, but I think we need to, we need to make sure that everybody's notified before we even go forward with-
Right, if we had some type of-
James, I love the survey here.
What's the survey?
So we have, the light blue is the 2012 survey, pay attention to these, right three. The dark blue was the 2015 survey. We asked them about the garbage collection going township-wide. You had about 24% in both cases opposed the idea. You had 43 and then this last time, 47% support and a very large chunk of residents, 29% the last time, who need more information. There's room for that dialogue, informing them about what would be involved. They're saying, I could be convinced of it, but it'd have to be under the right circumstances. So certainly, a public hearing makes a lot of sense. So a good discussion for the board would be at what timing? You could, the SAD process itself requires a public hearing and you could start down that road so that you're working, making progress on the process at the time the public hearing happens or you could do it now. You know, obviously, to have an early one before you even entertain any further step. Is there a desire of the board on what the timing of that would be?
Well, it's kind of hard to have one when we don't have the facts. As we're going through the process, we will have the facts. We can stop that process at any time if it turns out people at the public hearing, you know, are overwhelmingly against it. But, you know, it is part of the process. How could we have it? We don't have a price right now, we don't have, you know-
That may be a question for Bob as far as timing. Certainly, we've done SADS in the past based on these preliminary costs. I mean, you could start an SAD process right now with a cost estimate of, we believe it'll cost this much. And that's before we've actually gone out to bid and it's still an estimate if we're fairly confident. I don't know if you had a thought on the timing of when we got bids versus when we actually started the SAD process?
I would like to, given the scope of the project, I would prefer to have bids for it prior to doing any assessment. I want the best number, the most firm number that we can give the residents. I mean, that's our goal with any SAD. Sometimes when you're doing road projects, you don't know what's under the old surface, so you're doing the best you can. This one here, I think, is a little bit more black and white of it's for, you know, the 96 gallon can and a recycle bin. So I think we can get pretty tight numbers on this.
Do you feel that contract, so contractor bidding on this then would be bidding on work more than a year away?
Correct.
They would, do you feel like they would be giving you, they'd be open to a process on giving you a bid for something that's more than a year away?
Most likely, it would have any variable cost excluded from it or some sort of clause to say that there may be a fuel surcharge. If fuel goes to $5 a gallon or something of that nature, there would be some sort of caveat associated with that. Other than that, I think we can get a pretty firm number. But I mean, I, we can go either way if the desire of the board is to offer consolidated trash collection to people who want it, the individual association special assessments would be the way to go.
Why does it have to be special assessments? Why can't it be one special assessment that covers multiple people in different places?
We can do that too.
It could be as long as everybody does it at the same time, yeah.
It will be multiple assessments if every meeting I'm coming to you, just like the road projects with the private road SAD is, you know, except the trash, I think we'll get a much more favorable response from the developments. But we could do that, we could open a window and say, hey, if your association wants to sign up for this in the next six months, we're doing one SAD for anybody who wants to sign up in the next six months. And we could do it that way.
Or give them three months?
You're, yeah. I don't think you'll get resolutions passed in three months, but we'll do the best we can.
I'm in favor of some special meetings to get that accomplished quicker. And the other thing I think, I agree with your approach on, you know, getting firm numbers, but here's why I would oppose it and that is because I don't think, hearing the conversation from our board members tonight, we are even yet in agreement on what the scope of work is.
I think that's an accurate statement.
And that's why I think we need to get the public's input. How many of them, you know, I served, I was appointed and still am serving on the Livingston County Solid Waste Committee. The amount of recycling in our county is very, very poor. It's a very small fraction of people that recycle. They're recycling for the future. They put everything in the white bag, it goes to the curbside and we're going to be, you know, mining these landfills in the future for metals and other things. That's a joke, you're supposed to laugh. So, you know, the, and, you know, perhaps instead of embedding that fee into the cost of all township residents, we should invest in putting in our own recycling station here, something like that, go in something with the county, multiple, somewhere like we have our, our septic receiving station where people can voluntarily bring their recyclables, their plastics or the metals and things like that. There's, there's a lot of options. I mean, there's many options already available in the county that people aren't even aware of that they could be doing something similar to that if they so chose. So that's why I'm thinking that we need to get the public's input on what would be the scope of work before we go into the contractors and say, you know, here's what we'd like to see. I can go either way, but that's, that's my purpose for the suggestion that I have.
And maybe I can just jump in there real quick. I've been to many- I've been to many association meetings over the past couple of years discussing this topic. And when you look at the survey, I would venture to say that the, the people who need more information, as soon as you present them with that annual fee, they would make a decision. I'll phrase it that way. That's the number one question I get is, I need to know how much this costs before I can tell you I'm on board or not. When I would hand the flyers out at the homeowners' association meeting, it was immediate. It's yes or no. It's, you know, not, not even necessarily what all, you know, they're like, are we losing any services? No? Okay, what's the cost? It's very cut and dry. I don't think it's, you know, so I think that question that you see up there, that's the, the underlying fact is, I would look at it as, you have 47% of the people who want it, relatively speaking, without knowing the cost. That, to me, is quite a substantial viewpoint versus the 34%. I would see the, the 34% or the 29% as, I need to know how much.
Exactly.
Because that's the key.
So I'd really covet some more discussion from around the table on that, the issue of, of what the, what's our goal? What are we pursuing? And at what point this public meeting makes sense? So that'd be really good to have. It's, because it's not on my survey and it really will drive what we're doing here.
Well, I think if we don't allow an opportunity for the citizens in our community to understand that this is where we're headed, versus all of a sudden you wake up and it's, it's a done deal, because a lot of people don't want the government to be part of their lives. They want to be able to be independent. I think we need to stress the importance of the, the weight of these vehicles on our fragile roads that we're putting, you know, to tell the story, what we're trying to do here, and be cost-effective as, as well. So it's, it's a two-edged program, but I, I really agree with Matt that we need to let the people know, and I don't know what the best way to do it. I mean, a public hearing, we might get 10 people, we might get 50 people. But perhaps we should, we should do some things via the Facebook and the WHMI and everything else.
Polling online or things.
Or have an opportunity, now, I don't know if it makes sense or not, but we did, we're doing a volunteer thing of the year, and I saw how many hits that thing got within a week. It's got like 5,000 hits or something like that.
Well, 12,000.
So if we could, if we could utilize that, either through a Survey Monkey or something like that, to let the people know that this is what we're thinking, here, there's an opportunity for that as well.
And even if you've got some of those subdivisions up and running under the Heartland program, and, you know, that, that itself helps publicize it for everybody else. What information would you be giving?
I don't know. Anywhere in the township, are they paying this, the estimated fee that you're talking about annually? Is there anyone paying less than that amount annually, other than somebody who doesn't give garbage pickup?
I think Treasurer Horning said that she was paying less, is that correct?
I'm not aware of it. I was actually surprised to hear somebody was paying less then. But, but that was because you didn't, you were, you're getting a service, a new service here that you weren't getting before, is that right?
So I guess where I'm going with it, I understand, I agree, I don't have a, I think it's always good to have a public meeting whenever you're imposing a, you know, for all intents and purposes, a new tax, and it's, but I think when you point out to the folks they're going to pay less than what they're paying now, or what will be believed to be less, where you're going to run into a problem is when you say, you're going to pay less and it's going to be more. You don't like that.
And out of all the HOA meetings, once the figures are presented, it's a pretty favorable response. The only ones that I really hear concerns about are people that leave for the winter. And then basically...
You're never going to get them.
That's my goal here is, I don't think we could develop a plan that's going to meet every aspect.
They don't like the sewer rates either, by the way.
Yeah. Yeah, they don't like the fixed, the fixed costs associated with the sewer rates that is a commodity.
And we're trying to keep the administration fee on our side because we need to recover that cost to a degree as well. The more record-keeping and different, this person has X, this person has Y services, if we can streamline this, ultimately, it will keep the cost down. And that was the goal with it.
Well, I would be in favor of having a couple of, I would call, for lack of a word, call them public hearings, because the public hearings would come with...
Information meetings.
I would have information meetings, and I like the Survey Monkey, and what else can we, I like what Bill's saying, maybe a Facebook, the township, you know, notice on Facebook, and then a notice on our, on our website, and not just our website, but the cable.
But again, if we got 5,000 hits just from our website for, I mean, there's, there's a lot of vehicles, I think, that you could...
Right.
Get the, get the word out.
And, and if you get, we get a room full, it's great. If we don't, we, it's, it is what it is, and then we can all make a decision. But I think you've done a very good job.
Thank you.
Putting all this together.
Thank you.
You've done a, did a fair representation. I think we beat this horse, so I'm...
What are the, what are you looking for in a public survey? I mean, what are...
I, I just threw it out.
Isn't that what that is?
I, I, I just threw it out.
Well, I take on the thing, though, if you don't, if you don't have a cost and service thing that you can present, what are you, what are you looking for?
I agree.
I mean, obviously, everybody's going to want more services, less costs.
Yeah.
If we can show them that and say, okay, here's where we're at, we think we may have a county-wide proposal, then have a...
How about this? Less services and less costs. That's also an option that you're not considering. You might get more sales on that than you would on more services.
Less services? I don't think so. I don't think anybody wants to lose a service they already have.
But who wants to pay for when they're not using? That's the question.
The thing is, you should probably use it. If my bill's going to come out the same or cheaper, and I have an option to use those other services, I don't, I wouldn't want to take away anybody's because I don't care what you're talking about, the stats about recycling. I have a lot more recycling at my house than I do trash.
The recommendation from the neighboring communities was, do not try and propose less services. Just trying to learn from their mistakes and not reinvent the wheel, but that, the ones that had even explored that option were met head-on with unfavorable results. So, I mean, we could certainly explore if that's a desire of the board.
So the question I have for you is, when you went to these homeowners' associations and you said the biggest thing was the, the dollar amount, what dollar amount did you use?
They saw the same thing that you said. And said these were estimates, were right, and basically, would you pay? And it was an overwhelming response. Most people, the majority of Heartland residents, at least in the homeowners' associations that I was visiting, they pay more than that. And even if the people who had lower rates, they were from companies that had been known to slowly fluctuate your rate, so...
When we were looking at potential SADs, we went to the contractors to get a rate for that subdivision or that group of subdivision. Then we were able to communicate, here's what the rate was proposed to be. And so they had, they were informed in their response.
Now, obviously, there's, there's quantity discounts when you're talking about an SAD for an HOA that has 100 homes versus 5,000 homes. Just the can purchases alone, that if we purchased 5,000 cans, our costs are reduced, huge on the, the initial capital versus buying, say, 100 cans. 100 cans, we're almost paying, well, I mean, we'll get a savings, but it's much closer to retail than it is what I would call a savings. I'll phrase it that way. So, I mean, there's scale of economies here associated with the, just the sheer volume that we're dealing with. So, just another point. And that was kind of what we originally looked at, and forgive me, Matt, I know it's not a pilot study, but when I say that word, everybody kind of knows what we're talking about. There wasn't a whole lot of cost savings between the cart materials and anything else because it was such a, all, all things relative, a, a small sample area. So I think if we went to the 5,000 accounts, we could definitely save some money, at least on the capital initial.
So is this, if you look at the cash flow part of this, so it's got to be on a winner tax? So you, we would have to have the, if it's going to go on and be collected before the end of February this year, we'd have to make our decision here pretty soon?
I wouldn't have it this year.
We could do it this year. It'd be paraded for next year.
Next year?
Right?
Because we're talking about giving people a year warning that the program...
Yeah, we'd have a whole year before we do it.
Taxes would be done in two weeks.
And that's what you're, you're suggesting, that that's too long, so...
If you, when you had a...
Yeah, it was just...
14.
I'm not opposed to having a public information meeting. I think that, that, that's fine. But I think, you know, we need to, to give them as close as reality the, the numbers of what it's really going to cost them so they can make an informed decision. And I think it should be the whole township. Doing it piecemeal, to me, is going to drive up costs, is going to make more work for the employees here. And our township's not that big, okay? So to say township-wide, it's not that, you know, huge of a, a project. So if we agree to, you know, to have some type of, you know, if we're going to put it out on social media and all these other things, we need hard numbers or close to hard numbers as we can get before we even start that process because, and it's been said several times, people just want to know how much it's going to cost me, you know? And, but we have that figure, then I think we should move forward with either, you know, an information meeting and then put it out in public and get that feedback. In the meantime, we can start moving on some of these other things that we need to, to move forward on it. Because I, I do think that, you know, even if you got half of the people that need more information, that's going to put you in the vast majority of the, the people that are going to want the service.
I have a comment. You've mentioned that you're going to go on an annual contract that starts to start with?
I think the, the initial contract would be annual.
Why wouldn't you want the initial contract to be a two-year contract so that you have a full year of 100% of...
And I'm sorry, I should rephrase it. That, that would be the goal. What I wanted to avoid was a 10-year contract. We've learned on our historical contracts that when you do kick something off with a long-term contract, you end up with a lot of amendments. So I just was trying to avoid that. So, yeah, two-year, the first year, full year, would be a full-year contract. I'll phrase it that way. That was, thank you.
So if it pleases the board, I'm going to try to take a stab at a, at a plan of attack here that might satisfy most of you. The idea may be, and maybe help me with the timing of this, so I'm hearing some consensus around the idea of having a public meeting sooner than later. And we can certainly advertise that and communicate it strongly and do some online and social media things with it. One question I might have for you is, I think I'm hearing, let's have that meeting before we initiate an SAD process formally. We could certainly do that. Do we want to do that before or after we go out to the contractors and take the, the bids that we talked about, getting quotes? There's some advocacy for firmer numbers, there's advocacy for having the preliminary conversation with the public based on what we have here. That's the two ideas, I guess. Any thoughts on taking the information we have now, again, as preliminary cost estimates, and just let's schedule that public meeting?
Well, and I think if, Bob, that's what the numbers Bob has been using for the last six months.
We can certainly, I mean, just as a courtesy, I can revisit it and see if there's been any updates, these numbers were developed, you know, we've been talking about it since 2015, early 2015, but, yeah, we'll firm them up. I mean...
To start, and it's not...
Absolutely.
It's not going to be much difference by the time it's all said and done anyway.
Correct.
But at the end of the day, at least it's a current 2016 number.
And I would, I think that's a very, you know, we'll get the most accurate number. I think we can have that flipped around and within a week.
So we firm those numbers up and then schedule a, a, a public meeting out there in the, in the near future. Put together some good educational communication items for, get it in community life, get it in the different areas where we'll reach people and do it in an informative, concise way. So that'll take a little work because we haven't gotten that far yet. But does that sound like I'm capturing the, the thought of the board?
Except for one item.
Yes.
And I would say that, and I'm repeating myself now, but as a township resident, if they knew that the township board and the staff members had a way to save them money and wasn't moving at breakneck speed to make it happen, I would be upset. Just like these homeowners' associations who've been asking us to do something for two years, why has it taken this long? There should have been example ordinance for us to start looking at for tonight's meeting. I mean, there are things we, you've got to be proactive to make this happen. You just can't, well, we're going to have to do this, it's going to take a while. I recognize that it takes time to implement things, but sometimes we're treating this like it's a huge problem, and it's not. It's something we should be able to resolve relatively quickly and effectively and efficiently. And so that's my charge to the, to you and to the rest of the staff.
We, we can certainly proceed forward if that's a desire, but I don't, expediting it, I believe, would be four to six months as outlined in the presentation.
I know it's going to take time.
Because that would have to be petition-driven assessment. Therefore, signatures would have to be collected, then there'd be four resolutions with public hearings. Just like the road projects, everybody wants their road done now, we have yet to do a special assessment for a private road in under eight months. So just throwing that out there. I think this would be quicker, but not, I wouldn't want that to be confused with delaying it.
Any other board feedback on the approach I suggested?
I think we should reverse engineer it, whatever you want to call it, figure out when is our due date and have it all laid out. So when are things got to, got to make a decision by a certain date? Because it's still tied, in my opinion, into the tax. You know, just, you can get the money before you implement it or you wait it for it afterwards?
The risk would be is, if that timing didn't line up perfectly, the township may possibly be fronting the cost of that until, until the, when a tax collection, if we're willing to do that, we'd have to look at what the, what the kind of dollars we're talking about.
It's a quarter million dollars just for the cans.
Yep.
Used $50. I don't know if that was...
It's, it's six figures. We, it's an investment.
So that, I would like to see that as well.
Sure. We can look at the timeline, too.
Make sure that we're amply ahead of when we want to implement.
Just so we're clear, for my, my direction, we're looking at the township because the number of counts is going to make the difference. We're looking at the 5,000 number, not like 100. Perfect. Thank you.
Anything else tonight?
Heads up here.
On that? James, you got it clear?
Yes, and, and if you can get a speco survey...
They're coming down the pipe.
All right, very good.
Right here. Okay, thank you, Mr. West.
Thank you.
Eight C is a resolution. James asked to have this put on. I'll let him explain his association. I think he's looking for a, maybe a name change or some people's more clarifying of what you're...
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Supervisor.
Is what it used to be known as?
It was Meligma, yes.
Yes.
Not benign, Meligma.
I know. I heard about this at work.
Yeah, just the profession, I appreciate the administrative committee encouraging this to go in front of you. My association did change your name to Michigan Municipal Executives. Two, two major interests here to promote, and this resolution of support is, would be to join other communities in the state who are, are doing that. One is a recruitment vacuum, baby boomers retiring, a profession that many don't know about. We, we want to try to recruit more people into the profession. And two is to help educate those residents who live in communities that are under council manager form of government about what it means to have professional management. And so with that, I offer the resolution for your consideration. Happy to answer any questions, recognizing that I know the board doesn't often consider these. And certainly, if you're not in favor of doing so, that's fine, too.
I move to approve the resolution of support for the Michigan Municipal Executives.
Support. Motion by Treasurer Horning, second by Trustee Harper. Any discussion? Being done, I'll have the clerk please call the roll.
Trustee Petrucci?
Yes.
Judge Choufou?
Yes.
Yes.
Supervisor Foulton?
Yes.
Treasurer Horning?
Yes.
Trustee Harper?
Yes.
Trustee Jermaine?
Yes.
Trustee Colaini?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number nine is board reports. We are in our first meeting in September. Trustee Harper?
No report.
Trustee Petrucci?
I don't have a report, but I have a question. I'll wait for James's report.
Okay.
You might answer before I ask.
Okay. Clerk Choufu?
No report.
Treasure Horning?
Well, I ran the numbers today and we collect about 10.4 million in summer taxes. And as of today, we only had taken in 3.9 million. So that tells you how busy our office is going to be until next Wednesday. So taxes are due next Wednesday, 6:00 PM.
Thank you for that reminder.
[laughing].
Trustee Colaini?
I have no report.
Trustee Jermaine?
I just would like to request, and I mentioned this to James earlier today, that at least for my benefit, and I don't know if the rest of you would find this beneficial or not, perhaps not so much Joe Colaini, but I'm finding that since we've given our larger degree of responsibility and authority to the planning commission, there are things